I don't see any things which are not in existence. Correct. And then John Saunders, we saw him. Yeah. And just out of the background, I don't see any construction. That's okay. Yeah. But he uses their own energy. On six. Don't think I have an avenue for your people.
It's infectious.
So, I mean, there's nothing we can... You know? He lives across the street. It just hits us. It just hits us. Okay, I'm going to call to order. The Montgomery County Board of Supervisors February 26th meeting. And our first item on our agenda is to go into closed meeting. And we're going to have a motion that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Section 2.2-711, number one; discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for an employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. County administrator will be the topic. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, roll call please.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Graffski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We're now in closed.
Okay. Sorry that took a little bit longer than we thought, so now we're back and we have to have a motion to come out of closed meeting. Is there such a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Demoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzakowski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're going to entertain a motion for the certification, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Demoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzakowski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're going to entertain a motion for the certification, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Demoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzakowski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're going to entertain a motion for the certification, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Demoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Demoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzakowski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're going to entertain a motion for the certification, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Demoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzakowski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're going to entertain a motion for the certification, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Demoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzakowski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're going to entertain a motion for the certification, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Demoss.
Aye.
Mr. Graffski.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, at this time, we're going to ask Ms. Hill, our county administrator, to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Please stand for a moment of silence as you're able, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you Supervisor Demoss for keeping me on track. Okay, so we're going to start off with our, why is it not on here? Hold on. I don't, let's see, this is not on here. We're going to start off with our New River Community College President Search, and we have Eric Johnson here to give us an update on the search. As you know, the President Patricia Hubert will be leaving at the end of this year, so welcome Eric.
Thank you Mary. So of those that don't know, my name is Eric Johnson, and I do serve on the Advisory Board for the New River Community College. That was, as I was appointed by the Board of Supervisors to that role, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to speak to you. So on January 10th of 2024, Dr. Hubert announced that she would be retiring, and apparently she wanted to leave a little bit earlier in the year than what she did, but Dr. Dorey, who's the Chancellor of the Virginia Community College System, asked her to stay through the end of the year. Our Board, our local Advisory Board at the Community College, which I'm one of three who represents Montgomery County, the other counties and City of Radford that use the Community College, all have two members, but based on our population in Montgomery County, we have three members that represent Montgomery County. So we met via Zoom as a Board. The Board members met together, and Dr. Dorey zoomed in with us with a few people from his office. Carla Kingsborough, who's the Community College System DEI Officer, and she's the Search Advocate. Melinda Carter's the Associate Vice Chancellor of HR at the Virginia Community College System, and then Nisei Young is the HR Consultant that we will be specifically dealing with during this process. The good thing is we have an attractive job to offer. This will be a national search. We'll create national interest for people that want to come to this community to work in this school. The school is in really good shape, and it's nice that we should not have an interim president, that we have a good timeline that we can work through to find a good candidate to replace Dr. Hubert. So right now, this time period, February, March, the school itself is creating a stakeholder survey, and that survey is going out to the New River Community College Administration, the faculty, staff of the college, students of the college, and leaders and businesses within the community that use the asset that the Community College provides to us. And so that's going on during this period of time. And then in March, and I have an example of it, a small example of it, but the Community College System will publish a position profile of what is the President's expectation for the Community College System, and this happens to be one from Brightpoint Community College, which is in Chester, Virginia, south of Richmond, as they went through a presidential search just at the end of the last year. So they apparently had about a six or eight week time period, so it's nice that we have almost a twelve week.
Okay, sorry that took a little bit longer than we thought. So now we're back and we have to have a motion to come out of closed meeting. Is there such a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Mr. Graffsky.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzakowski.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and now we're going to entertain a motion for the certification. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have such a motion?
Motion.
Second.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fritzakowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Mr. Graffsky.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Chair Biggs.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, at this time, we're going to ask Ms. Hill, our county administrator, to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Please stand for a moment of silence as you're able, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you Supervisor Demont for keeping me on track. Okay, so we're going to start off with our, why is it not on here? Hold on. I don't, let's see, this is not on here. We're going to start off with our New River Community College President Search, and we have Eric Johnson here to give us an update on the, on the search. As you know, the President Patricia Hubert will be leaving at the end of this year. So welcome, Eric.
Thank you, Mary. So of those that don't know, my name is Eric Johnson, and I do serve on the Advisory Board for the New River Community College. That was, as I was appointed by the Board of Supervisors to that role. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to speak to you. So on January 10th of 2024, Dr. Hubert announced that she would be retiring, and apparently she wanted to leave a little bit earlier in the sea, the year than what she did, but Dr. Dorey, who's the Chancellor of the Virginia Community College System, asked her to stay through the end of the year. Our Board, our local Advisory Board at the Community College, which I'm one of three who represents Montgomery County, the other counties and City of Radford that use the Community College, all have two members, but based on our population in Montgomery County, we have three members that represent Montgomery County. So we met via Zoom as a Board. The Board members met together, and Dr. Dorey zoomed in with us with a few people from his office. Carla Kingsborough, who's the Community College System DEI Officer, and she's the Search Advocate. Melinda Carter is the Associate Vice Chancellor of HR at the Virginia Community College System, and then Nisei Young is the HR Consultant that we will be specifically dealing with during this process. The good thing is we have an attractive job to offer. This will be a national search. We'll create national interest for people that want to come to this community to work in this school. The school is in really good shape, and, and it's nice that we should not have an interim president, that we have a good timeline that we can work through to, to find a good candidate to replace Dr. Hubert. So right now, this time period, February, March, the school itself is creating a stakeholder survey, and that survey is going out to the New River Community College Administration, the faculty, staff of the college, students of the college, and leaders and businesses within the community that use the asset that the Community College provides to us. And so that's going on during this period of time. And then in March, and I have an example of it, a small example of it, but the Community College System will publish a position profile of what is the president expectation for the Community College System, and this happens to be one from Brightpoint Community College, which is in Chester, Virginia, south of Richmond, as they went through a presidential search just at the end of the last year. So they apparently had about a six or eight week time period, so it's nice that we have almost a 12-month period to work through this process. And then in April, the official announcement will go out to, to the public to state that there is this position that is open. That position will be listed on many higher education recruiting websites, as well as Dr. Dorey is very involved in several national level organizations, not only in the Community College System, but other higher education systems. And, and he's very excited about being an advocate to recruit the right person to come to this, to serve as our next Community College President. In April, May time period, based on some of the interests that people express for this position, the Community College System will, has a webinar that's what is it to become a college president? And it really sets the expectations for those people that are curious about the position and have an interest in applying, applying for it. And they found this to be very successful to kind of eliminate, pre-filter some candidates. So there should be a lot of candidates that we're going to be talking to, but they found this webinar to, to filter a lot of those candidates. May time period, there will be the training for the Advisory Committee, who will be screening the applications for those that actually apply for that position. So that Advisory Committee will be chaired by a current Community College President. So it will be the Chair, as well as be the Vice Chair will be a current Community College President in the Virginia Community College System right now. And then three local members of our New River Community College Advisory Board, which is Bill Cunningham is our Chairperson, he will be one of those members, as well as two additional members from that current Advisory Board will serve on that Advisory Committee. There will be three New River Community College employees, one from administration, one from faculty, and one from staff that will work there. And Dr. Mark Rowell, as many of you may know, who's the Vice President of Workforce Development and External Relations at the Community College System, he is the liaison, current employee liaison to the Advisory Board and the Community College System as we work through this process. There will also be some Virginia Community College System employees that are on that Advisory Board, as well as the Virginia Community College State Board, New River Community College Liaison, Ed Dalrymple, who is out of the Culpeper areas where his business is. And in my period of time that I've been on this Advisory Board, Ed, Ed has come to majority of our Board meetings, so even though he's in Culpeper, he does have an interest in what's going on at our local level. So the end of May, May 31st would be the cutoff for the applicant, applicants. And then in June, the Community College System will start their HR pre-screening, so who's eligible, who's not eligible. And initial, the initial meeting of the Advisory Committee will happen sometime in the later part of June in Richmond, where the expectation is that we can have potential interviews with up to 40 candidates. And then sometime in July, early July, that we will have a second round of interviews with another 10, 10 to 12 candidates. And those 10 to 12 people will interview with three different groups during that, those two-day period of time. The Advisory Committee that I mentioned, that group of people that were made up there, the Chancellor's Cabinet will interview those group, and the Chancellor himself will interview those candidates for that. And then the third day of, of those days, we would deliberate to see who kind of the top choices may be to be the finalist for that position. So after those interviews, the Chancellor's Office will do background checks and, and confirm that these are the right people that we want to have come speak to us. And in the August State Board Meeting, or State Community College Board Meeting, they will certify the finalists. And then those finalists will be submitted to the local community college, where we will be doing interviews here in Dublin, and I'm sure possibly Christiansburg, to interview those final, finalists. And there will be Board members, employee members of that interview panel, as well as have the opportunity for the candidate families to meet those members of the system. The local Advisory Board would then return our favorite choice to the Chancellor's Office, but at the end of the day, the Chancellor will have the final say in who becomes the next Community College President for New River Valley Community College. And with the expectation that in October, there will be an announcement for who that next president will be, in the anticipation that there, they would start that job in January of 2025. So this is not one of those jobs where you give a two weeks' notice, and because it's a national search, that there will be time to relocate, you know, to this, this area. And there is an expectation that there will be some internal candidates that will go through this process. So there's, there's definitely not a need to, to eliminate internal candidates. But that was the gist of our meeting with Dr. Dorey, and if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them quickly.
Okay. Any questions down here? Hop out over here. Thank you for giving us that timeline, because I know everyone is really invested in who's going to come forward. They're going to have big shoes to fill.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you very much.
Yep, I appreciate it.
All right. All right, so our next group is Volunteer Montgomery County, and we have Ms. Strickler here to, to talk to us about this. Very exciting.
It is very exciting. As Alex comes up, I just wanted to say a few words. I've shared with the Board how proud I am of this group. It started a long time ago with the RSVP program, and it's evolved, and we've, we decided about a year ago to go in a little bit different direction and get away from the grant funding, because it wasn't a significant amount of grant funding, and it was really constraining us some. And so these ladies are here to share with us. I'm excited to hear about it. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share with y'all tonight. Just want to give some information about what we've been doing as Volunteer Montgomery and what we hope to do moving forward. So a little bit of history, Angie touched on this just a bit, but we used to be RSVP, which was the Retired Senior Volunteer Program for Montgomery County and Radford. We've had a volunteer program here for the past 50-plus years, which is pretty amazing. In April of 2023, we made the changeover to Volunteer Montgomery, thanks to the support and blessing of the Board of Supervisors and County Administration. What that change meant, as Angie stated, was the loss of a $50,000 grant, which Montgomery County very graciously agreed to cover, but it opened up a lot more opportunity for folks to come out and volunteer and get involved in the community. So now we are able to welcome volunteers of all ages. Anybody under 18 has to have permission from a parent or legal guardian to come out and volunteer. Anybody under 16 must have a legal guardian with them when they volunteer. That's for our in-house programs. Our partner sites, of course, we work with them and find out what their preferences are as far as age range. So we just got some photos here. You'll see, I really like photos. I don't like a lot of words on my slides, so just be prepared for that. Just have some photos of our 50-year celebration that we had last year. Some of our fiscal year 2024 events that we've already done. So you'll see on our first slide, we have some photos of our Patriot Day baskets and our flowers for vets. These are programs that we do every year. Our Patriot Day baskets are filled up with goodies for first responders throughout Montgomery County. We take these out and deliver these to all the local police departments, state police, NRV 911, as well as all local fire and rescue. We have volunteers come in to help us pack the bags up. They make really sweet little handwritten cards, and then they help us deliver those throughout the county. You can see some of the delivery photos on there as well. On the right, you'll see our Flowers for Vets program. We accept vase donations all year long at our office to get prepared for this, and we partner with Gates Florist for the flowers. We have volunteers, once again, make handmade cards, and this last year, we were able to take 55 flower arrangements to veterans all throughout Montgomery County. So you can see some of the photos there of our arrangements and the folks that went out and delivered them for us. This next one is two of our biggest programs. On the left, you're going to see our Holiday Tote Bag Program. Every year, we ask for donations for these tote bags to be filled up with goodies to take out to our assisted living facilities and nursing homes that are in the community. So this past year, we had 100 tote bags that we delivered to English Meadows in Blacksburg. Our volunteers assist with gathering all the materials, picking them up, organizing them, and delivering the donated tote bags. We rotate throughout the county each year to determine which assisted living facility is going to get the tote bags. On the right, you're going to see our Supplies for Seniors. We have that every January. This past year was our 16th Annual Supplies for Seniors. We had a record number of 36 volunteers come out and pack 230 bags. Each bag contains about $50 to $60 worth of household supplies and hygiene products. We partner with the New River Valley Agency on Aging, Radford Fair Lawn Daily Bread, and the Virginia Veteran and Family Support Services to identify homebound seniors and veterans in our community that could most benefit from these bags. After that, we partner with all of our local police departments and hand-deliver them throughout the county to these folks. And our lovely Santa and Mrs. Claus are also volunteers that join us every year when we go out for the Holiday Tote Bag Program. It's really fun. Here we have our Valentines for Vets program. This is one of our most recent programs that we did. We had 19 enrolled volunteers ranging from nine to 84 come out and participate with us, that we had children as young as three years old that were there making cards with us to send to veterans. Altogether, 490 handcrafted Valentines were made to be delivered to the Salem VA Medical Center and the Veterans Care Center in Salem. This slide here just shows you a little bit of our fundraisers that we do throughout the year. I think it's really important to point out all of the programs that we do. That money comes from fundraiser money. It's not taxpayer dollar. Our volunteers work very, very hard to make sure that we have the funds to cover what we can do for the community. So just a couple that are on here, we have our Walkathon, we do our Bake Sale, our Fashion Show, and Bingo. Our Walkathon, we usually partner with the Christiansburg Parks and Rec Center. Our Bake Sale takes place here at the Montgomery County Government Center. Our Fashion Show, we partnered with Pawnee's Boutique. And for Bingo, we kind of go back and forth. We've done it at Iron Tree, we also do it at Creed Field, so that we can have a family kind of set focus Bingo as well. Our next fundraiser coming up, we have another Bingo on March 6th at Iron Tree Brewery, but unfortunately, we're sold out. So if you didn't get a ticket, you'll have to wait till the next one. This slide is just some of, some of the fun things that we do. Our volunteers do a lot of hard work throughout the year, so we like to celebrate them and make sure we do fun things for them as well. On the left, you'll see some of our holiday party pictures that we have. We throw that every single year to celebrate our volunteers. We have Santa come out, give some gifts out to the volunteers. We have some wonderful food that our volunteers bring in and just enjoy our time together. On the right, you'll see some photos of our Open House, which we did earlier this year. We showcased some of our partners, specifically the Library, the Animal Care and Adoption Center, the Christmas Store, and NRV Cares this year. We had crafts for kids and adults to like, which you can see there. We also had a hot chocolate bar that folks could enjoy. We had an adoption event partnership with the ACAC, where three of our animals were adopted, including our little beagle that you can see. By the numbers, still, let's see here. Partners. So we have 60-plus partner sites within Montgomery County that we work with to send volunteers to them when they need them. Obviously, there's not 60 logos on there, because I could not fit them all, but I wanted you guys to see, maybe recognize a few that you're familiar with, that you've either worked with yourselves or spoken to. It's quite a few, and we have new ones coming on every single day that are reaching out to us, saying, we've heard about you, we've seen you, we want to get involved with this as well, what do we do for this? So that's really exciting. We just wanted to give you guys an idea of some of the folks that we work with, some of the sites. All right, our volunteers. I'm going to start off by saying these numbers are already completely outdated, because I ran these numbers February 6th, and we are getting new volunteers daily. So as of February 6th, we had 195. I think I checked this morning, and we were up to 217. So do with that what you will, but based on the 195, you can see the age breakdown there. This year, this fiscal year, we've had 46 new volunteers. I'm really happy to see such a spread in the age, because we're still honoring that 55-plus that was our core that we love and we've always respected, and we're also welcoming in new ages as well. On the right, you can see the graph of the new volunteers per fiscal year. That shows you back through 2019. I look back for the past 20 years, and I think the average was about nine new volunteers per year. And as I said, this fiscal year, at this point, we had 46. I'm not good with math, but it's more than that now. So just to give you an idea of where we're at. Economic value. So the independent sector has a current national hourly value of volunteer service set at $31.80 per hour. Once again, this number is from February 6th, but we had 13,627 hours. That's over $433,000 so far of volunteer work that we've put in. Last year, last calendar year, through some of the fundraising that you guys saw, our volunteers raised $18,812 to put towards the community programs that we do. We have a manufacturer's coupon, coupon program, where it's cards and coupons, second and fourth Monday of every month, we have groups that come out and clip coupons to send to our adopted base in Germany. Then those are dispersed to the families to help save them some money while they're over there, just to show our gratitude and help in any way we can. Last year, we clipped and sent over, over $97,000. And our last number there, ViCap is one of the programs that we partner with through NRV Agency on Aging. It's a Virginia Insurance and Counseling Assistance Program. We have counselors that meet with folks who are going on Medicare or retiring, to get them the best possible plan, pay the least amount, have the best plan for their prescriptions, and they were able to save over $477,000 for folks throughout the New River Valley last year. So they do lots of amazing work. Our challenges. So so far, we've had two challenges that we've really run into. The first one is finding and creating family-oriented volunteer opportunities. I'd say we're tackling this one pretty well, though. We've got lots of different ideas that we're throwing out there to have family opportunities, opportunities for young folks, putting different timeframes on the programs we are doing, doing more with the nursing homes, and having those connections made that are intergenerational. So that's a challenge, but we're doing pretty well at it, I feel. And then the second one, with growth and opportunity, comes the need for more staff to oversee everything. We have a lot going on, as you could see with just the numbers that we put up there. We have a lot more that we want to do. So just making sure we have enough hands on deck. I want to make sure we all get, we get it all done, but I want to make sure it's good quality work that we're putting out as well. All right, and with that, I'm going to turn it over. We have two volunteers who have come tonight to speak with you guys just a little bit about their experiences with Volunteer Montgomery. First up, we've got Ms. Deena Flincham.
First, I'd like to thank the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors for allowing me to speak today, and I'd also like to thank Mandy Hayes, who is the Coordinator of Volunteer Montgomery, and Alex Strickler, the Director of Human Services, who provided me with the opportunity to volunteer. I am Deena Flincham. I've lived in Montgomery County for 22 years and have been a volunteer for at least 16. Before I retired, I worked in IT for over 35 years in the DC area. Supreme Court Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes has credited with saying, "The taxes are the price we pay for civilized society." Civilization certainly requires support, financial and otherwise. I like to think that volunteerism is what we pay for community. Which, community which not only predates what we've come to call civilization, it's the bedrock on which civilization is built. I volunteered in civil organizations, but my main area of work and expertise at the, is in the New River Valley Agency on Aging, where I represent Montgomery County on the Board of Supervisor, the Board of, of the Agency. I have, I have served for a number of years there and have, have also served both as the Chairman of the Board and as Treasurer, which I serve now. My area of volunteer work there is in Medicare counseling. The Medicare Part D drug plan is complicated in several ways, and the plans change every year. Plans that work beautifully one year may not work well at all the next year. And we, we can, we have people who think, well, you know, everything worked just great this- this year, so consequently, I'll keep what I have." They can change every year, and we help people find the ones that would work best for them. Most people can change only during the open enrollment period, which is a relatively short time, about seven weeks, between October fifteenth and December the seventh. In 2023, two agency staff members, five volunteer counselors, and three volunteer support staff helped six hundred people in the New River Valley save over four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which you saw up there on the, on the board. This is simply comparative shopping. It's nothing more than looking at what you have versus what you could get. And, and that, it is real money. It can be used for other things. It could be used for groceries. It can be used for heating bills. It can be used for any sort of necessity that our seniors need. Since 2013, we have helped people save about five-point-four million dollars. It's a lot of money. These figures are reflected in charts that if you don't have, we can give you, which are, which are, look something like that. And I want you to understand, too, that a great deal of this money, even money that we save for people who live in Giles and Floyd, it gets spent in Montgomery County. Montgomery County gets a fair amount of that. I've been asked over the years why I put so much effort into this work, or more to the point, what's in it for me? The answer is simple. To save money is of great importance to those in our area, and we have many of them, who are living on fixed incomes, low savings, and often have very few skills to help them work their way and navigate a program that is confusing to people with advanced degrees. My husband, for one, had a PhD in chemistry. He knew nothing, nothing whatsoever. I didn't want to know anything. But some of the people that I deal with are people who have difficulty reading with comprehension. But I will say that the people with advanced degrees are as confused as the people who can't read with comprehension when it comes to this, a lot of the Medicare work. It's important to me that our seniors not only have the resources to live more comfortable lives, but also that they have as much control over their lives as possible. If there is one thing I have learned in my sixteen years of volunteer, mainly with, with seniors, it is that they fear the loss of control of their lives more than almost anything else. And being able to sort of reassure them and put them back in control of even just this small piece of their life is very, very important to them. At the end of a counseling session a few years back, a gentleman from Elliston informed me that this was the most helpful help he'd had in a long time. Helpful help, great concept, best kind. Thank you for your support for Volunteer Montgomery, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have or to meet with you at your convenience individually, or if you are part of a group. I know I, I meet usually annually with the Retired Educators. I meet with the Kiwanis Club and several other groups, and we will be more than happy to explain how all of this works. And it's also important to note that we also help people who are new to Medicare. And we are getting a number of people new to Medicare, and we're getting a number of people who are retiring, who are not, who, who are well past sixty-five in some cases. And getting started right makes all the difference in the world. So please don't hesitate to get in touch with Mandy or Alex. We're more than happy to help you, and, and it's all free. Free's a good price. Thank you.
Any questions from board members down here, over here? Okay, thank you.
That's Rosemary Jones that's going to speak as well.
Hello. My name is Rosemary Jones. I've been a volunteer for a little over ten years. I'm a second-generation volunteer. My mom volunteered until her death. She was what I would call a super volunteer. She volunteered for everything. Now, my son is a third-generation volunteer. And many of the programs that Alex talked to you all about, I enjoy participating in. There are so many opportunities to, to volunteer. I help with mailings, clip coupons for overseas military bases, make cards for veterans overseas and for veterans here in nursing homes, do birthday parties at the nursing homes and assistant living. We do, and we also do a birthday party for the Virginia Veterans Care Center in Salem. And this is such a simple thing to do, but you would not believe how the residents really enjoy you coming and spending just a little time and making that birthday party happen each month. Also prepare flowers and faces that we take to the veterans. We deliver cookies and goodies to the first responders. We fill and deliver totes that we take to the nursing homes. And then we also have the Supplies for Seniors, which Alex alluded to, that we fill bags for people who have very little. Some of their not able to get out on their own. And we go sometimes, and after filling these bags, we go to deliver them. And it will just break your heart sometimes. You know, one has come and said, "Well, I really appreciate this bag that you're bringing to me, but you know that person over there really needs it a whole lot worse. Would you take my bag over to them?" And another will say something like, "Oh, I was all out of money, and I needed these things and had no way to get them." Prayers are answered. So, and we get the reward. We get the reward, the blessing, for being able to, to volunteer. I'm blessed to be able to have volunteer opportunities. The staff is great. I enjoy getting to meet new people and continue to work with them. And there are a lot of volunteer opportunities that we haven't even touched on, such as working at the Christmas store, McKeeb, literacy volunteer program, the animal shelter, and many, many more. And a volunteer can choose as much or as little as they want to do. They can use their time, their, and their talents. And in my estimation, Volunteer Montgomery is a great place to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have as well.
Any questions? Okay, Supervisor Byrne?
So you just focus on Montgomery County, is that correct?
Our main focus is Montgomery County. We do have a couple of partners that are outside of Montgomery County. Our kind of rule for that is they have to have some service that is provided within Montgomery County.
Okay, and I would expect that you are well-connected with all of the nonprofits in Montgomery County.
Yes.
Or most nonprofits in Montgomery County. I used to work at United Way of the New River Valley, which no longer exists because it's part of the Southwest Virginia. They used to provide Thanksgiving boxes. They used to work with Belmont Church to provide a lot of gifts at Christmas for select families that are, that were going through challenging times. They started a Downtown Christiansburg Halloween and things like that. I'm not sure if any of that stuff is still going on, but I can tell you that it was very well-received. I don't know if you look for opportunities to pick up, but...
We are always looking for opportunities to pick up.
Okay. I can help you with that.
Is that, are those your two questions, or?
Oh, that's right. We have two questions.
Yeah.
I have more questions.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question? All right.
Thanks. Virginia Tech has an annual campaign for nonprofits where the employees designate some part of their income to go to nonprofits. So they have a really good list of the local nonprofits. Community foundations really well-plugged in, but then the churches do a lot of volunteering. So it's, it's sort of like this huge matrix of what's actually supporting the people of Montgomery County, a little on New River Valley or Southwest Virginia. Last question is, you know, I, I saw those red bags. I didn't see a big business placard on the side, but do you ask for business sponsorship or anything like that?
So Christiansburg Parks and Recreation Center are the ones that have donated the bags for us in the past. I believe that AARP has also donated bags for us in the past as well. So that is one of our outreach where we are not actually making the purchases. Everything is donated. It's just the time that we put into making the deliveries, making sure that everything that's in them is safe for whichever room they're going to. Certain rooms can have certain items, but everything is fully donated for that.
So in that instance, all of the items were donated?
Yes, ma'am.
I got you. Are all of your items for all of your programs donated?
So for our Supplies for Seniors that we do, we don't take direct item donation. The bags are donated, but we do not take direct item donation just to make sure we can keep it fair across the board. We've done that in the past, and we've ended up getting some sixteen-ounce containers of laundry detergent and some fifty-four-ounce containers. So for that specifically, we request monetary donations, and we use the monetary donations as well as our fundraising funds to purchase those things ourselves to fill the bags, just so we can make sure it's equal across the board.
I think there's, might be a great opportunity for you to partner with the Chamber of Commerce because a lot of businesses would be probably very interested in partnering with what you do.
Absolutely.
Great job. Thanks for sharing all the information.
Thank you very much.
I just want to, on behalf of the board, thank you for everything you do, the investment and the hours that you put in to helping our citizens. And I really enjoyed meeting you all when I came in December with former Chair Blevins, and good luck with everything. Just keep us informed when you, you have those things cropping up that we can come to, and thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Our next presentation is going to be the Montgomery County Public Schools FY25 Budget Presentation. And so we'll get that set.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Welcome.
Hard to come after the volunteers, but we'll do our best. Board of Supervisors, Ms. Hill and Mr. Lawrence, we appreciate you affording us this opportunity for the Montgomery County School Board to present our Statement of Needs from the Superintendent, myself, and Dr. Whitaker, our Director of Operations and Finance. And we'll go to Slide one.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a brief overview of that, what we're going to try to go over tonight. We want to go over what we did with last year's budget, which is currently this year's budget, the 2324, some of the accomplishments we did. What was the process in order for us to develop the budget as we move forward this year? What's being awarded to us from the Governor's proposed budget? As we all know, the legislators are working on some changes now that may benefit us, and we'll see that when it comes to fruition. And then what were our goals in developing the 2425 budget for the next school year? And then we'll talk about ultimately what our funding request is for operating budget as well as for the school nutrition. So I think I mentioned this last year, and I think it's important for us to start off with, while we are asking for an increase in funds and we're asking for our school systems to be funded at the need that we think they should be, we should never lose sight of what we're doing here. This isn't about buildings. It's not about adults. It's about children. It's about providing the kids in a public school forum the opportunities for them to become all they're capable of becoming. And the core of our democracy is public education, and we want to make sure that we ask for all that we think is needed for us to provide the opportunities for all of our children to have all the opportunities that they, that they can avail themselves to from our public education so that when they leave our system, the world is their oyster, whether they want to go to Harvard, Virginia Tech, or God forbid, UVA or anything like that. Those opportunities are there for them, and that commitment comes from us as a school board and from us as an administrative team.
So we wanted to share a little bit about the accomplishments that we had in this school year. And so we were excited this year to be able to provide a five percent salary increase in the fall and an additional two percent salary increase January first. In addition, we conducted a salary study last year and were able to implement salary corrections for those individuals at the start of this year. We worked diligently to address the needs of our self-funded insurance account with no increase to our employee-only premiums, and we also added eight positions during the 2324 school year. Those were four full-time athletic trainers and four custodians. For the 2425 development, budget development process, we started in October of 23. At that time, we began our meetings with our employee group representatives so that we could begin to talk to them about the employee group budget presentations. Then in November of 23, we met with the individual schools and departments to provide them with a budget request template so that they could complete that template to turn into us what their budget requests would be for the upcoming school year. In December of 23, employee group representatives presented their suggestions for considerations to the school board at a school board meeting. They then also submitted their budget requests on that form to the, to the school board employee, not, not to the school board, but to the division staff, and we began to review those. Also in December, Governor Yonkin's proposed budget was released on December 20th, just in time for the winter break. In January 24, on January 4th, we received the budget calculation tool, and we began to work on that. That is based upon the Governor's proposed budget. We then presented to the school board the superintendent's statement of needs on January 23rd. In February, the superintendent's detailed proposed budget was presented to the school board on February 6th, and the school board approved the funding request on February 20th. The Governor's proposed budget for that, we utilized an ADM of ninety-two hundred students. This is three hundred and sixty-four less students than for the current school year. The budget proposed by the Governor includes an increase in support for K-12 education over the biennium. It funds staffing requirements of the Literacy Act, includes a one percent bonus in fiscal year 25, two percent salary increase in fiscal year 26, bolsters teacher recruitment, retirement, I mean, teacher retirement fund, I'm sorry, and VRS. And it also includes technical adjustments to the lottery proceeds, sales tax, and incentive programs, and removal of sales tax hold harmless.
I guess that's my, my turn for this one. All right. What are our goals for this year and what will we be trying to accomplish with our budget for 2425? The first thing is we want to continue the current programs that we have and to make sure we have all the resources in order for those to continue in providing those opportunities for our students. There's increased staffing that we're going to have to, we're going to have to increase staffing across the division to address some of our needs. We'll talk a little bit more about that. Some of those are required staffing to meet our students' needs with special education, English language learners, and the like. We want to increase our minimum starting hourly pay to fifteen dollars. The school board, I think, has made that really clear, that that's a position they have, too. It shouldn't, you shouldn't be able to make more money at Arby's than you should be working as an employee in our schools, working with our most precious resource, which of course is our children. We want to extend the workday for our paraprofessionals and school nurses. They often work more hours than they're paid for because, you know, their days are not the same. They often work more hours than they're paid for because, you know, their days are not the same number of hours as our teachers, which is about seven and a half hours. And we think that's really critical and important to bring them up where they need to be. We also are looking at increasing our employee salaries, 5%. We think that's fair. Right now, the governor's budget has a 1% retention bonus, which could be considered for a raise as well. The local match would make up for the other 4%. If you look at salaries across the state, we're lower than what the state average is and Virginia as a whole is lower than what the national average is. If we continually want to get the best people in our schools, we have to pay them at least a going rate. The rising cost of healthcare, as you all know, that's going up with our annual trend is about 9.7%. And we made some adjustments we'll talk about last year to defray some of the problems we had with our reserve account, that we are on track to do that. But those rising costs will necessitate us rising what our premium, increasing what our premium equivalents would be. We have to increase the, some of our supplies and services and materials throughout the division. You know, inflation has impacted all of us and that's impacting everything from, you know, gasoline, paper, pencils, supplies, equipment and everything else. One of the things that we haven't done, we haven't done well, is the refurbishment of our Chromebooks. And we've used end-of-year funds to simply replace them when we had the monies to do so. When every student has that resource as a one-to-one device moving forward, we have to be a little more strategic. And 750 students is about one grade level. So that gives us an opportunity to identify one of those now and budget that annually instead of relying on end of year. And then to purchase four new school buses, we initially wanted to purchase eight school buses. Our fleet is about 125 school buses or so. And ideally would like to replace about 10 a year. They have a lifespan of about 15 years. But we're turning in some of the electric school buses that we're going to get reimbursed for a brand-new diesel or gasoline, I forget which one. So that would get us to those eight buses that, which we had wanted in the beginning.
So we'll provide a little more detail of each of those goals for you. So always our first goal is to ensure that we have quality educational programs that are aligned with the goals of the strategic plan. So some examples of those quality educational programs are providing access to a wide variety of career and technical education programs. Ensuring that our students have access to rigorous courses, DE, AP courses in all content areas for students in all of our schools. Elementary and secondary coaches to support teachers, particularly new and provisionally licensed teachers. Explicit systematic literacy instruction for our students. Access to STEM education for all students, beginning at the elementary level. Expansion of pre-K programs. Unified physical education. High-quality professional development focused on specially-designed instruction. Engaging qualities of instruction and science of reading with a focus on improving literacy. And alignment of instruction to evidence-based practices. As Dr. Bragan mentioned, a goal is increasing our staffing to address the ongoing needs of our students across the division. So you see here an increase in staffing. Seven special education teachers. One English language learner teacher. One instructional coach. One preschool teacher. Three school counselors. One gifted and talented teacher. One nurse. Four custodians. Two buildings and grounds staff. One buildings and grounds lead. And one dean of students. In addition to providing pay raises for employees, we need to address the starting pay rate for employees who are below $15 an hour. In this graphic, we've shown starting pay comparisons for custodians and administrative assistants. However, administrative assistants, paraeducators, custodians, buildings and grounds scales will all be moved to a starting pay rate of $15 per hour as well. Extended work time for our paraprofessionals and nurses to 7.5 hours per day. Our students are in our buildings approximately 30 minutes before and after the start of the instructional day. Our paraprofessionals and nurses need to be available during this time to support the needs of our students. It is essential that we continue to focus on increasing, increasing pay for Montgomery County Public School employees. We propose a 5% increase for employees and will utilize the 1% for SOQ positions proposed in the governor's budget, in addition to local funding, to provide pay raises for MCPS employees. On this slide, the starting pay raise for teachers in MCPS and the surrounding divisions are provided. We currently have the third highest starting salary for teachers when comparing to surrounding school divisions. In order to continue to attract and ensure we are able to retain the best teachers and staff, it's necessary to provide pay raises for employees. Please note that while this slide provides a comparison for teachers, the proposed pay raise is for all employee pay scales. The goal to address the needs of the self-funded health insurance account. This graph provides an overview of our self-funded health insurance account. We have worked hard to address the self-funded insurance account, self-funded balance. We did this first during the 2320, the 2223 fund year by contributing those year-end balance to this year. We then worked to carve out pharmacy, pharmacy benefit manager. The rebates for the first quarter of our plan year are anticipated to be received in March. At this time, we project that the rebates from the prescription plan that was carved out this year will bring our fund balance to 1.7 million. The funding request before you includes a $1.5 million increase for employer contributions to cover an anticipated increase of cost of claims based on our consultant's projection. The cost of supplies and materials continues to impact Montgomery County Public Schools. For this reason, it is necessary to provide both an increase for inflation while also providing additional funding to meet the ongoing needs that were identified during the budget process. As Dr. Bragan mentioned, we have identified the purchase of 750 Chromebooks so that we can begin to build a replacement program as opposed to using year-end funds each year to purchase Chromebooks. This year, we are purchasing or proposing to purchase one grade level of books to begin with this planning. We have a fleet of 120 buses in operation and have historically tried to purchase eight vehicles per year. This year, we are asking for the purchase of four buses. As he mentioned, we have returned four, four of the electric buses and are getting four diesel buses to replace those. They did not meet our needs and so they will be new buses that are replacing those and so are trying to purchase four buses instead. The last slide that you see here shows our requests by category for the school operating fund. Sorry, I didn't mean to, let me go back. There you go. And we're available for any questions that you may have. And I bet that it might be more than two per person.
Well, we start off with two per person as we go around. So I'm going to start down here. Supervisor Grasky, do you have any questions at this time?
I do have some questions.
Okay.
I'll start with a couple, though. So first of all, thank you for putting together the proposed budget here. I guess I'll start with one question, which is, so as we were looking through the, kind of the more detailed proposal, right, the breakdown by, by division and everything. So I think in your presentation, you said you, you put out a template to the, to the different groups and it's kind of a bottom-up assembly of that budget. And so my question is, once those requests come up, do they get looked at in aggregate in the sense of, you know, are, are we requesting the same thing across multiple divisions? Is there opportunity to, or do you look for opportunities, you know, of scale and things like that when it comes to, you know, software or purchase services or things like that? And so, you know, is there, is there any chance that there's duplicative requests that make their way into the final budget?
It's a great question. I'll answer my part and then Dr. Whitaker. Typically, when they come to the central office, that's our goal, to take a look at those things and see from a district perspective, not just a community or school-based perspective. Do they make sense and are we being fiscally responsible in those resources? And I would say that we are and that there isn't any duplicity in that regard because we will look at it as a district and a division level where perhaps the school or just the strand is looking at it from only their perspective. So I don't think there is anything that's duplicated across different schools or division, different schools or communities.
I would agree as well. I think it also provides us the opportunity to see, you know, if something is being requested by a group, you know, over and over again, that maybe we've missed something and it is a great need because it's being requested by a large number of people, that it may be something that we really need to give extra attention to as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then I guess for my other question right now. Oh, shoot, I had it. Well, I'll pass to Supervisor Demots.
Okay, we can come back. All right, Supervisor Demots.
I don't have any questions right now. Excuse me, I reserve the right to have a lot for you later, though. I, well, let me take that back. Do you have anything in writing for us? I am a tactile person, so I don't know if you guys have any budget books or could prepare some for us.
We can certainly provide them for you all, print some, and we could have them over tomorrow.
Okay, that would be really great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
And I might ask more even tonight, who knows?
I can give your mind if you want to look at it right now.
May I? I'll give it back. I'll keep it then.
Okay, yeah, that would be great for everyone to have a copy of that.
We did email that right now.
We do all kinds of things.
Okay. Supervisor Byrne.
Can you tell me what pupil trans column means?
Pupil transportation.
Okay. So Yonkin's budget has no raises. It just has the 1% retention bonus in fiscal year '25. Is that correct?
Yes, as far as I understand.
And that is under salary enhancements, 5%? No.
1%.
It's in the state revenue. That's what you're saying. Those are my two questions. I have more.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Kits.
Okay, I know we've talked about raising the minimum wage on a lot of things. And I was looking through here and we saw we're going to add some custodians. And I've heard it come up a couple of times where we need to add custodians. We need to add maintenance staff. We're still kicking it in. The average was about 36,000 for the, I'm trying to word this right, supported to the best ability that they could for the amount of work that they do. So I just want to annotate that because I only saw, I think it was four positions being added for custodial staff?
And three maintenance, I believe.
Okay. I didn't catch the three maintenance, so I was looking, that's what I was looking for right now. So, but that would bring your staff to what, seven, eight for maintenance?
Overall, you would know that better than me, Dr. Whitaker.
It's four custodians and three grounds.
Okay.
Grounds, I'm sorry. I said maintenance.
Okay, I'd like to reserve to come back to a question here in a second.
Just on that Supervisor Kits, I think our school board has had a dialogue about that too. And we do understand that some of our hardest-working employees aren't making a great deal of money. But we can't do it all at once and we're making moves towards where we want to be, not only to be competitive in the region, but to make sure we have enough people working for two reasons. We want to make sure the buildings are suitable for our staff and students. And the current staff we have does a great job and work really hard in our maintenance and facilities and grounds, and we don't want to overwork them to the point where, of exhaustion and they want to leave and go in somewhere else because it's untenable. So we appreciate that. We just don't believe we can do it all at once. As you see the budget here, now it's already going up $12 million, right? So.
And Supervisor King.
Yeah, I have a few questions. You want to raise minimum wage to 15 and right now they're making 14. Is that on, if you raise them to 15, is that plus the 5% that you're asking for for rate?
That would be the new rate for them. So for those groups, it would take them up. If, if they were less than 5%, it would, you know, everybody would get at least 5% to get there. So it wouldn't be to $15 an hour and then an additional 5% on top of that. Did that answer your question?
So that would be going 15 plus 5%?
No.
No, sir. It would be at least 5%.
Okay.
If, and for those who it would be more, it would be more than 5%, but it would be at the $15. So it would not be 15 and 5% additional.
Okay. And I was watching the school board meeting and you was, y'all was talking about being low on custodians. And you asked if anybody in the school system wanted to help clean schools and all, you was going to give them $20.60. Is that correct?
You go with the rate.
There you go. Are you speaking about the, when we did the weekend cleaning schedule?
Yeah.
Yes. No, that, it was not $20 an hour. I'll have to get the exact rate, but that was so that we made sure that what our custodians make in their overtime rate was what we were paying for those individuals who would do the weekend. So we made sure that at our minimum custodial rate, which I believe is $13 and something per hour right now. So that time and a half rate is the rate that we were paying for the weekend cleaning time, what they would make at time and a half.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And Vice Chair Fidzikowski.
I was looking at some of the categories and I noticed under administration, the increase is about 1.1 million. Is that just mostly in salaries or are you increasing staff?
Are you speaking in the detailed budget?
I can't remember which chart it was. Y'all threw a lot of charts at us here on the email, so. But it was one just labeled admin and it was about a 1.1 increase from last budget.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Thank you. That slide?
I don't think that's where I saw it, but.
1.1.
That might be it.
Yep. So that would include, if you look down, do you mind?
Good.
That'll look, include all of those items that if you look down that list, and I got to get a little piece of paper because my eyes don't work the way that they used to. So that includes the categorical realignment to get some things in the right place, additional instructional personnel, the salary enhancements, health insurance. Stay in the right column.
Yeah, and I see, I see other increased paraprofessionals. Do you know how many we're talking about here that would add up to that much of an increase?
How many, for which of those, for which of those items?
For all of it, all those that are on that chart. Do you know, I mean, because you don't, you don't list it by how many people you're hiring.
Yeah, I can get it out of the detailed budget for you if you want, here, out of this big book. If you give me just a minute and we go through the other questions, I could have them pull that information for you.
Okay.
Because this book, this big WME will have that for you.
Well, for that matter, I don't, I don't need that answer tonight. So if you just want to shoot me an email, that, that would work too.
Absolutely.
And my second question, I was wondering, many years your carryovers are huge. And I'm sure it's a percentage. I'm sure it averages out over, over time. So with this much of an increase, I expect your carrier, carryovers are also going to increase. Have you all ever looked at where the major source of the money that is not spent is coming from? Do you all have an idea of that?
I do.
I could speak to what I understand just from last year. I don't have the historical perspective, but our last year end, year end was not very significant from $134 million budget. It was around $900,000 and change. And I believe most of that money we were planning to put in our health reserve account. I think it would typically come from salaries and that what we didn't expend moving forward.
So budgeted, budgeted positions that weren't filled? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Or people left and someone came in maybe making less?
Right. Due to retirement and that kind of thing.
Yep.
So the percentages, we can show you in that school board funding request on page 14. There's a chart and the bottom chart has a green graph that's aligned. And that, that shows you the percentage of that fund balance that was left in each of those years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, back over to this side. Supervisor Demots, do you have a question at this time? Okay, and Supervisor Grasky, did you have another one? You're okay? All right. And back over to Supervisor Byrne.
I consider all the funding that came through because of COVID and, and now we're transitioning out of that as a kind of a cliff. How much of this budget is because of that? Any of it? Any of it?
Some of it. One of the ESRS positions is the Dean of Discipline was currently an ESRS-funded position right now, where we have a retiree that's working at .8% of that. And that's been really helpful to us at one of our middle schools in addressing some of our needs in that building. As far as other ESRS funds, Dr. Whittaker, you could probably talk about those.
Yeah. There were two other positions that are being rolled over from ESRS. So, one is that administrative position that he spoke about, and others is an instructional coaching position. And then the third one is a counseling position that we're pulling over from ESRS.
Are there any other, how many ESRS positions? If you got these three positions, how many are left remaining?
None. Yeah. We had a total of 23.5 ESRS positions originally. And so, these three that we are rolling over are the only three that are at this end that are left that, that we are pulling into the operating budget.
So, you're, you're budgeting having 300 less students, but on your chart for the number of staff and teachers requests, you want 23 people. Can you, I mean, talk about that?
Sure.
That's pretty remarkable.
I, I would agree. And the funding number isn't necessarily our actual enrollment. That's what they're projecting us to be at our average daily maintenance, which it could be higher, and it is higher now. But if you look at the numbers in one of the detailed charts, I don't have it memorized by page, but we're actually down nine elementary teachers because of the enrollment, that we won't need those additional teachers, and no one's getting fired or anything. It's just attrition that we won't have to fill those. And the class sizes will remain the same. So, you know, that's indicative of some of those enrollment declines. The areas where we do need are some of our children with special needs that are stayed in federal mandated programs. That's seven additional teachers in that area. Our English language learning population continues to grow in the region. And we've budgeted one. We're probably going to need two, because we may need one more by the time this year is out for those positions. The preschool expansion program is significant. It's something that we want to do, especially in parts of the county down in Eastern Montgomery and Reiner, where there are limited opportunities for our kids that preschool. Even those families that can't afford it, there's just limited resources there. So, we want to increase that one position and encourage and get more three-year-olds to get into our preschool program. The rest of those positions are counseling positions, as you mentioned, Ms. Bond, about some of those counseling positions. We had ESRS-funded positions that we got rid of some last year as well, and because we knew this financial cliff, per se, was coming. But we do see that there's a need. There's a need for our mental health of our students, and there's a need to provide that support, even though there's less aggregate number of kids. Some of our children here do need more services. So, we've included three school counselors in there as well. One gifted and talented teacher, because I think our school board has been committed to, I know we have to meet the needs of some of our learners that need more support, and maybe on the other end of the spectrum. But we don't want to forget our high performers either. And we looked at, and reviewed it with our administrator of gifted and talented, what would one additional gifted and talented teacher mean? And it means we get to provide more services to more kids. So, we wanted to make sure that was important as well. The other position is a nurse, which we do need an additional school nurse. And the other are support personnel, as we mentioned, for our facilities such as, I said, maintenance, but it's grounds and custodial. I think that's all. Did I miss anything, Dr. Whittaker?
Nope. Okay. Supervisor Kits.
Oh, I have a couple. I brought my own book. So, I took a little note here. And my, one question I'll start off with is, I see a 28% increase in the executive portion. And I heard something about a position was moved from and wasn't categorized right. Can you please explain that?
Yes, sir. So, you got to go a couple years back. So, the position that I had previously, but it is still my position. So, when I was in the instructional position, I was Deputy Superintendent of Instruction. The person in that role before me was categorized under the Office of Instruction. And so, when that happened, they did not ever move it over to the Executive Administrative Office. And at that time, it should have been moved over. And so, what we have been trying to do over last year and this year is to get things categorically aligned correctly. And it had not gotten moved yet. And so, it is not an increase across the whole budget, but it was in the wrong area. And so, it's moving it over from the Office of Instruction into the Executive Administrative Office where it should have been.
Okay, thank you. I just needed, I knew it went something, I just wasn't exactly how it, how the math came out. Now, you brought up one thing, you talked about mental health and how important that was. And being the husband and a well-trained husband at that, for my wife's a social worker. She went back to school and got her master's in social work. And I'm looking here, and I will not begrudge anybody the pennies they make or the dollars they make for what they do, because it is extremely warranted. We're paying our, our guidance counselors and our social worker, I saw one, about 10 to 11K on an average last than what we pay for our media specialists. And I know where the market rate goes for social workers, especially with an MSW. What are you doing to try to address that? Because I know mental health comes up a lot, and the stress that our children are going through. And I know how tough it is in there, because I coached at the middle school for a long time in Christiansburg. And what are we doing to address that? Because right now, the new ones you're bringing in are starting off at 50, and the average you have of the ones you have now are at 57. So, just talk to me a little bit about that, just to kind of address, because y'all brought it up, the mental health portion, and how important the counselors are.
Yeah, and we can't overemphasize that it is important, our well-being over students. And they're coming in with more needs than they have in the past, and the school counselors will help address those needs for school-based type counseling. And some of the needs that you mentioned, Mr. Fidzikowski, are more clinically-based psychiatric-type needs that we're having. And.
You just. [inaudible].
Supervisor Kits, I apologize. Oh, my God. I apologize. I believe I'm blushing right now. Supervisor Kits, please accept my apology. But one of the things that this school board did this year was use some of that ESRS money and to bring in NRVCS and a significant amount of a million dollars to get increased clinical mental health professionals, somebody such as an LCSW or somebody with a psychological counseling degree to help work with some of our more at-risk and our more needy kids. And they've done a great job this year. And one of the reasons that the school board, they put out an RFP to see other, and there were other agencies that were interested in providing that service. And we went with NRVCS because they were able to provide the same number of clinicians. And what the goal was, that when they provide the services, if they develop a clientele for this year, that then they will be able to self-fund that moving forward next year. So, we're really hopeful. We have eight additional clinicians in our building from NRVCS. And if the clientele, they can build up this year for their funding model, which is different than the public schools, they can then hopefully maintain at least some of those positions for next year to address some of those significant needs. Supervisor Kits. Thank you.
You did used to sit there, though, didn't you, sir?
No, he sat, he's there.
I apologize to both of you.
Okay. Supervisor King.
I got several questions, but I just want to ask one. I've been going, sitting there going through the budget and all, and it's talking about 5% salary increase and increase, VRS increase and all this. Then down on the bottom, it says 5% inflation. What is that?
You want to talk about it?
Yes, sir. So, the 5% inflation is for stuff. It's for the fuel, the materials, the supplies, the things that we buy and purchase, the goods and services.
I'm talking about positions.
If you help me know where you're looking, I might be able to help you a little better. I apologize.
Oh, it's improvement of instructions.
You got a big.
And about every one of them, it says on it, not every one of them, but most of them, it says on it, just like the social worker service. You got 5% salary increase, VRS increase, 5% salary. And then on that one, you have 5% inflation.
So, for each, if you're looking at the one that's the detailed budget, so there's three different documents. There's the proposed detailed budget, and that's the one where it's broken down by each of the different, each different page. Each of those has a couple of different things. It has the salary for each person in that group. And those have the increase for salary, and the increase for VRS, and the increase for health insurance, and then the increase for inflation. So, we broke it down into each of those different categories for you, so that you guys would know exactly how much is people's salary, how much is their retirement, how much is their health insurance, and how much is the stuff. So, that's why it has it so many different ways listed, if that makes sense.
So, that, like in instructional supplies, that's what the 5% inflation is on that one.
Yes. And then if you see people, it might say teachers, and it has a number beside it. And then it has increase for salary. That 5% is for their pay.
Right.
And then if it says VRS, that's the amount that's increased for the VRS. And then health insurance, that's the amount for their health insurance. We just really wanted to provide as much detail as we could for where all the money was going.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Vice Chair Fidzikowski.
Bringing up the mental health issue, are you, are you all using your counselors and your mental health professionals for discipline issues, or is it for other things?
It's probably for discipline and other things, right? I don't think they're managing discipline, but often when our students are struggling discipline-wise, there's an underlying reason. And sometimes upon their return, and as a preventative model, we would be working with them to either work through some of those concerns they may have. But we also want to be proactive in having our counselors, you know, we interviewed a young lady today for next year for counseling. And the goal is to conduct, conduct group counseling sessions, to go into classrooms and work with children, and how to be proactive in dealing with minor conflicts with their colleagues and their peers, and how do you do that? And using I-statements and all the stuff that we want our children to be able to do when conflicts arise, as they always do in a classroom. So, I, I don't want to say that they're doing discipline or they're managing discipline, because they shouldn't. That's what our administrators are supposed to do. But they should be supporting kids that may be struggling and have disciplined outcomes because of some of the things that are going on in their lives.
So, what I'm hearing is, so it's done on a case-by-case basis, not?
They really shouldn't be, if you're talking about making out discipline and dealing with kids that have discipline issues, that shouldn't be happening, but supporting children that may have been disciplined for whatever reason, because maybe they had some other issues that were going on. And upon their return, or while they're, you know, waiting to get picked up by mom or dad, having the counselors work with the kids, that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay. And back on this side, anything down here?
I have a question.
Supervisor Demots.
One of your new positions that you requested is the Dean of Students. Is that a position that we don't currently have? And, and what is that?
It's a great question. I think our school board asked that same question. It's a position we do currently have. It's a retired administrator who is working in the position now using ESRS-funded monies at one of our middle schools that had more discipline infractions and more behavior issues than some of our other schools. And we wanted to provide the additional supports there. And it's been really successful this year, working with the administration and the staff at that school. They've done a really nice job in reducing those discipline infractions, as well as increasing the students' attendance. So, the fact that things are going well, much more improved from last year, we don't want to pull the rug out and get rid of this position, because it's totally ESRS-funded. So, that is the only administrative position that we have in there for additional funding, because we'd like to, for it to continue.
Is that the one earlier that you mentioned was at .8 of full-time?
That's correct.
Is it the dean of, I am sorry if I heard this incorrectly earlier, so please do not take this offensively. Is it called the Dean of Discipline right now? And you're converting it to the Dean of Students?
No, I misspoke.
Okay. I'm so sorry. That, that's what got me confused.
Don't be sorry. I said the wrong thing. At least I didn't call you Mr. Fidzikowski. I apologize.
Anything else? Okay, let's go back over here. Supervisor King, do you have any other questions?
Yeah.
How about Supervisor Kits? All right, Supervisor Byrne.
How is your program helping, you know, the program you created? New teachers come in, you help them get certified or whatever. How's that going for you?
Dr. Whittaker?
Sure. It's going great. We actually, at our next board meeting, are going to celebrate our second cohort of teachers who have successfully completed. So, we have six teachers who have completed the 30-month program. We have another 20 in the program. And so, as you know, there is a declining pipeline of teachers entering the traditional four-year program. We have 20 more teachers who are in cohorts. It's a 30-month program. We feel like we've established a really strong program. You know, there are programs out there that are much shorter, but the goal of AMPs is what it's called, Alternative Model for Professional Studies, is to ensure that our teachers are ready, and that after 30 months, they're going to stay in the field. We really feel like we have an excellent model, and, and our teachers feel that way. So, we welcome you to our next board meeting to come and celebrate those three teachers who have just completed their program. And we'll actually be going to the state here shortly to ask, the new licenses that will come out will be seven-year licenses. And we will probably be, again, the first school division in the state to get a seven-year license.
Was there a requirement for those teachers to stay within this school division for a certain period of time after they graduate? Was there any of that?
There was no requirement for them to stay, but if they left, they had nothing to take away with them. So, the way the program was modeled was they either stayed for all 30 months and they completed, or if they left early, they had nothing that they had completed. Because there are five college courses that we were able to provide them the coursework for. And the way we did it was we took the five classes and disassembled them, and then re-put the coursework together. So, essentially, they didn't complete any of it till they completed all of it. And so, they had, they were not a completer of any of it until they completed all of it.
And how much does that program cost? And where is it on your budget?
So, we don't, it doesn't, on Montgomery County Public Schools book, technically cost us anything. We use federal programs, funds from Title II to use the funding that we use for the program. All of our teachers for the program are Montgomery County Public Schools teachers or administrators, because we feel like we've got great teachers. And so, our teachers and our administrators are the teachers for that program. It's all done in-house.
I have more questions.
Let's see if anyone else. Is everybody else okay? All right, go ahead.
Do you know what the pay raises for Roanoke City and Salem will be, or are proposed to be for this year?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but in my conversations with my colleagues in Region Six, they were planning on going for 4% or 5% raises, but no one is, I don't know what they're going to do. That was our conversation.
So, if we, if, if we, in fact, gave 5% raises, we would still be third, right? We wouldn't, assuming that.
All things being equal, yeah.
Okay. Great job with the self-insurance fund balance.[1656.54] That's, that's awesome. I think I've asked this question before, and what is the magic number? Do you have a magic number for that graph?
To get the reserve account up to?
Yeah, like in years past, it was up at $4 million, but obviously it came down, you know?
Four million would be where I would be really comfortable. At a spend such as ours, around $16 million total in our medical spend, I would feel comfortable having that reserve. I think that's a route where they, about where they recommended. Dr. Whittaker, I don't know if you remember?
Yep. And do you ever use that money for anything else?
No.
Supervisor Bone, that, the county, because we're self-informed together, they, we hold those funds and then reimburse the health insurance claims as they come due, they are not used for anything else.
Have you ever not used those, like we can't line item, you know, approve anything for you guys, I understand that. But let's say that you request a million dollars from us, but only use 500,000 for that line item. Is that possible for them to?
I think what she's asking is if we, if we funded $900,000 or a million and a half dollars for your health insurance fund, is there a way to make sure that that all gets transferred to the health insurance fund, not spent on other items?
We would definitely, if you were going to give us that money, we would guarantee that it would go into that account. You know, one of the reasons it's looked so low there is there's a timing issue with the rebates that we're getting from the prescription. As Dr. Whittaker said, we carved out the prescription benefits management. And we got the preliminary numbers now for the first quarter, actually came right before the meeting and we're on track to do what we wanted to do, so we're, we're pretty confident we'll be where we need to be for this year.
We are also very fortunate that we share the same financial system.
Yeah.
So you can see everything. You'd catch us real quick if we ever tried to do anything like that. We certainly would never try to, but you know, our journal entry actions run through you all.
I guess it comes from the memory of maybe at the state level using VRS funding of some form or whatever and us having to back pay into it kind of thing. I have more questions.
Else have questions? All right, proceed, oh Supervisor King.
Oh, now I might hear where I'm still going through this. It says professional service, legal service. Now here it says legal representation, collective bargaining, $140,000. Could you help me with that?
Yes, sir, those are the fees that have been incurred for collective bargaining in terms of different fees?
I was gonna say, we didn't spend, we didn't spend that much money in collective bargaining.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So we provided the detailed breakdown of all of the different fees within the school board services and just what are different things those expenses have been spent on. We do also provide in our financial updates to the board now, how much we have spent in total on that. And you have Marches that you could provide us. I could pull it up for you in five minutes if you want me to. I have it in our board brief of the total we have spent on collective bargaining if you wanted that. But this is just each thing we've spent money on. I actually went through every single expense this school year and provided for you pretty much everything we've spent money on this year. And so this was just one of the expenses that the board had spent money on.
If, if you'd give me them figures on so far what y'all spent on collective bargaining?
Absolutely.
You can just email it to me or something.
No problem.
Thank you.
What page were you looking at for the school board services?
Page 18 in the detailed budget packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think what happens is like when board members have questions like here and then questions afterwards, if they would send them to Ms. Hill, she will send them directly over to the schools and then everyone will receive the information for the questions, all board members. Is that good?
We'll compile the questions you asked this evening and send them all to the schools and then we can send them all back to you, to the whole board.
Yeah, and get the from. Yeah.
Somebody else's.
Yeah, we got it. Got it. So you don't have to worry.
Mark's probably writing them down too.
Okay. All right, let's see, anything else there, Mr. King, or you okay? Vice Chair Fidzikowski, did you have anything else? All right, we'll go back to Supervisor Bone and Dan.
I'm close to the end, I've got three questions. Chromebooks, I thought you always had it in your budget for every sixth grader or some year to always get a brand-new Chromebook that followed them until he graduated.
No, ma'am.
That would make sense.
It would.
That's what we're moving towards. And I don't know the history here, but where I came from, we would do that. We would do kindergarten and then fifth grade and then ninth grade and you'd have a cycle through, you know, four or five years depending on the device. I, I can't speak historically, but I believe year-end was used to do that, right?
Yes, historically, we've used year-end funds. Ideally, we need to purchase three years at a time. So this would be for one grade level purchase at one time is what we have put into the budget. Typically, we have used year-end funds. You know, there's a lot of year-end needs and everybody always comes with their year-end list, but that is how the, they have been purchased in the past. We did also, I believe, use ESRS funds as well for a large purchase of Chromebooks when we had those funds available. And that's what's carried us in the, in the past couple of years.
Can you tell us what the limitations were of the electric buses other than the range?
Just working, you know, we would be driving down the road and they would stop operating. They spent more time in the shop than they did on the road. They just really were, they were not reliable vehicles for us. We were not able to keep them in operation and they just, they did not prove to be reliable for us out on the road. They were not buses that we could send very far. When it was cold, they didn't work very well and they just did not provide for us reliable transportation for our students and our drivers. So we worked with, you know, they were grant-based, so we wanted to work correctly within the confines of the funding that we got so that we were not in trouble. So we worked with those grant providers to the Department of Environmental Quality, I believe is who it was, to make sure we weren't in trouble since we had gotten them, worked with them and they're pretty much swapping us out, exchanging a diesel bus for it and they'll be giving somebody else an electric bus.
I think what, what, what I heard was the length of the routes, right? The cold weather and the hilly nature of our terrain here was not really beneficial. Some of them only would get 80 miles, that wouldn't be able to do the entire morning runs.
So you're getting four diesels for that plus buying four more. So you are getting the eight?
That's the plan, yes.
I have one last question.
Okay, this is the one last one? Go ahead. Because I'm going to say what we need to do is like sort of wrap it up and like, and send our questions to Ms. Hill. But go ahead, is your, one last question.
So it was my understanding last year when you asked for funding for all the counselors, that you were going to hire them. Instead, you contracted with NRVCS for the counselors, or at least this is my understanding. Could be completely off-base. We all knew last year, there was a, a lot of difficulty hiring counselors. Did, have they or have you gotten all the counselors that you requested last year, one way or another?
That's a really good question, Ms. Bone. And last year, if you remember, you're close to remembering it, right? What we were going to do is contract out with an outside agency that was going to guarantee us, they would bring us the clinicians in and they would come from somewhere else, come, I think the company was based in Pennsylvania. And they were going to bring them here. And then when we talked about it at a school board meeting, you know, somebody said, Bernie, how could you be so dumb? We have somebody close by, why don't you talk to NRVCS? And I did it initially because I didn't think they'd be able to have the capacity to hire people because they wouldn't have them in the area. But after we did the RFP and we worked through it with Jalen Wine-Barghner and her team, they did. They provided some of the people. I think we didn't have them all for August 1st, but we have the people that we need now moving forward and we actually made a change or two, I think, in staffing on their end and, and that worked out. But the NRVCS was able to get the people that they said they were going to do and they're doing a really nice job. And like I said, the goal, why they won the RFP, not just because they were a local provider, but what they had that incentive in there is if they can build up the clientele that this could then continue next year without us coming to you all and asking for additional funding or from the state or anything that they would be able to fund it.
So my, the math that you're sharing with us, you would assume that what you had in your budget for this year, you don't need for this, for '25 because NRVCS is funding those?
Correct. And it was ESRS-funded, so we wouldn't have it anyway.
And, oh.
Like we knew the ESRS funding was going away. So that's what made NRVCS really enticing to us. If they were able to do it this year with those fundings and then if we could then continue even one or two more for next year that we wouldn't have to fund, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay. I only had two questions. And the first one Supervisor Demonts took care of for me about the dean of students, but the other one is bus aids.
Not the dean of discipline, right?
Yeah, just dean of students.
It's my mistake.
The, the bus aids, when you have that in there, but there's not a bus aid for every bus, right? So can you, you know, sort of tell us so everyone understands about the bus aids?
You know, typically students that have special needs may need help getting on and off the bus and even, you know, getting strapped into seats and things like that. We do have some significantly disabled students that attend our public schools and they would require bus aids. Sometimes it's behavior incidents, sometimes that we have a bus aid on there temporarily to make sure the students behave as they should on the bus. But typically, a regular education bus that's 50, 70-passenger bus does not have an aid or power professional on them.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
And, and then I just have comments. I've been looking at Montgomery County Public School budgets since 1978. I have never seen the complete amount of detail that you all have presented us with. Not only is it detail for the budget, but it sort of outlines, it's like taking a course on budgeting. And I want to thank you for doing that. I want to thank you for answering the idea that what are your goals and how you align them to what you were asking in the budget. I think that, that was done in a really good way and I think that we can understand it. And I also want to thank the school board chair, Mr. Hudson, and the school board members that are here tonight. Thank you so much for coming and hearing the concerns and the questions of our board members. And on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for your presentation and then I'm sure we'll have questions that we can send over. But thank you very much.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Break time, 10 minutes. We're all back now, so we're ready to move ahead and we have two public hearings and we're going to have input from staff on each ones before we open the public hearing, I guess. So Jason, you're going to come up first with the solar. I mean, Justin.
It's okay, it's a late evening already. At least you didn't call me Supervisor Fidzikowski.
At least you didn't call me Supervisor Fidzikowski.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to second that one.
It's contagious now. It's like, okay, Justin, you're going to address the comprehensive plan, large-scale solar energy systems one first, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty.
All right. So as we remember, we went through this pretty extensively in work session last month. But for citizens that may be seeing this for the first time, I just wanted to provide, again, a brief overview of what led us to this point. So here is your timeline. Again, last year, the board commissioned the planning commission and staff to study the issue of large-scale solar energy systems and recommend amendments to the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. We're going to look at those in two pieces this evening. Again, as a reminder, the comprehensive plan really outlines our goals and strategies, whereas the zoning ordinance is the enforceable piece, the regulations themselves. So to get us to this point, we had a lot of input from citizens. We had a lot of input from the planning commission and the solar energy work group. We also had representation from the solar industry. So this really was a collaborative group effort. And while I'm the one standing in front of you this evening, again, I just want to give credit where it's due, that this really was a group effort. We held a work session with the planning commission in December, where they reviewed the proposed amendments that are before you this evening. And there haven't been any substantive changes since you saw this in work session last month. So again, just some reminders of how we came up with the numbers that you see in front of you this evening. Again, the graph that I showed you at the work session in January is on the left there, showing you how we looked at acreage in the county and really removed from the total acreage calculation those areas that were identified through the process as sensitive areas that we wanted to ensure were protected. So ultimately, again, the planning commission has recommended an overall cap of 4,500 acres in the county, which is, again, a little more than 3% of our available acreage and about 2.19% of all unincorporated land here in the county. And again, looking at the mapping, again, 92% of the county is zoned agriculture A1. So it's very important, when we were looking at these proposed amendments, that we were being sensitive about how solar would impact our agricultural areas in the county. So that's showing you just graphically what that looks like. The white areas, those are the two towns, and the federal lands, which we have no regulatory authority over. The map on the right is, again, graphing that available land versus unavailable land when you remove out those sensitive areas that were identified. So I'm going to run through for you just a summary of the proposed changes in the comprehensive plan that are before you this evening. Again, we're adding introductory language to utilities chapter. This outlines both the rationale for the changes and describes how the process to develop the amendments came forward. This is important, again, because the comprehensive plan is a long-looking document. So we want to document in the rationale for the changes when we look at the amendments. The comprehensive plan also outlines various new goals and strategies to guide our policy decisions and application review. So in those goals, we're adding a new utilities goal, 2.4, to provide opportunities for solar while minimizing the impacts to the county's viewshed and natural, cultural, and historic resources. And there are several sub-goals that are outlined there. 2.4.1, balancing land use by limiting solar acreage to 4,500 acres. 2.4.2, encouraging shared agricultural uses. That includes grazing, crops, and native ground cover. 2.4.3, encouraging future agricultural use on sites by retaining the topsoil. 2.4.4, the project scale, saying that the size of each individual project should be carefully considered. Goal 2.5, related to project siting, outlines the desired and undesired locations for solar projects here in the county. And then those sub-goals, again, call out those individual areas that we have identified as those that need protection. So our rural and resource stewardship areas, that includes both our agriculture and forestal districts and areas under a conservation easement. Our historic and cultural heritage areas, that's going to be our national register historic districts. Our growth areas, where we have the infrastructure that would support additional residential and commercial growth in the county. Utilizing land with limited development potential, that encourages the use of brownfield sites, former industrial sites, and lands with limited soils. And then other resource considerations, minimizing impacts to the historic, natural, and cultural resources of the county. That, again, is a very brief summation. You all had a more extensive packet in front of you that I can go through if you have any questions for staff at this time. I will note that when the planning commission held their public hearing, they unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan.
Okey-dokey. Supervisor Demonts, do you have any questions?
I do. Will you also have a presentation for the second public hearing?
Yes. And that, your question about the tax implications is included in that presentation.
Okay. And then during your last presentation, we talked about a House bill and a Senate bill that might be impactful. Will that be?
Also in my second presentation.
Okay. Then I will not steal your thunder.
Okay. Supervisor Graski?
No questions at this time.
All right. Supervisor King?
No, I have no question, but I appreciate you looking into this and kind of preserved farms and everything.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Supervisor Kitsch?
No questions at this time.
Okay. And Supervisor Bone?
No questions.
Okay. All right. Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. I don't either. I think that the information that you provided, you know, before and now, I mean, it's been great.
Thank you.
And the group that worked on this, and I know Supervisor, or Vice Chair Fidzikowski was part of that, really appreciate everyone's service.
Thank you.
All right, then. We'll go ahead and open up this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this proposal? Okay, seeing no one, we will close that public hearing. And Justin, I guess you're back up.
This reminds me of last time.
Okay.
All right. So again, the next presentation will go more in-depth with the recommended amendments to the zoning ordinance. Again, this is our enforceable set of regulations that will guide these projects going forward. So as a reminder, this is currently how we define solar energy systems in our existing zoning ordinance. We classify them either as solar energy system minor or solar energy system major. I know there have been a few citizen comments that were concerned with the changes that we were making to these definitions and how that might impact residential solar that is providing solar energy to a private residence or a private business. These proposed amendments do not touch residential solar at all. So if someone has a roof-mounted or ground-mounted solar system on their home or on their business, that is considered an accessory use under our zoning ordinance and is regulated administratively. Nothing in the proposed amendments will change that. That process will continue to be a zoning permit issued through our office and then a building permit issued through the building department. So we are proposing three new definitions to be added to the zoning ordinance. The first is for a battery energy storage system. You can see the definition there. Solar energy system community scale. This is production of five or less megawatts. And solar energy system utility scale, which is more than five megawatts. Again, going through the specific items that are addressed within the zoning ordinance, the location of projects in relation to other approved projects was discussed by the planning commission. It was determined that each individual special use permit would be evaluated for its relationship to other approved projects. The same goes with project size. There's no specific limitation on individual projects that would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis through special use permits. Minimum setback requirements. The recommendation was to require a minimum of a 100-foot setback while reserving the right to increase setbacks as a condition on each individual special use permit. Require buffer yards, that buffers must be included in the project and shall at minimum be located within the entirety of the minimum principal structure setback for that zoning district. Again, that gives us some flexibility when you look at the various zoning districts of what those buffers will be based on the other uses that are in the zoning district. And again, the planning commission or the board can require additional buffers if they so choose with a special use permit. Relating to battery storage facilities, they would be allowed, again, in both community scale and utility scale projects. I provided you some information, as we referenced in the work session, about the inclusion of battery storage and how that has the potential to limit the number of panels in some of these projects. But again, to Supervisor Demont's point, that could also be in conjunction with more panels. Decommissioning, this was something that we heard a lot from our citizens. So that was covered extensively within our regulations. We do have to include decommissioning of projects per state code. But it does require the submission of a decommissioning plan as part of the special use permit application that includes an estimate to remove the panels and associated equipment from the site and return the land to its previous condition. If approved, the applicant must submit a bond or a surety in the amount of 100% of the cost to the county, and that bond would be reevaluated every two years as necessary. Related to shared agricultural use and return to farmland, we did include language in the zoning ordinance to include facilitated shared agricultural uses within solar projects. The ordinance would also prohibit the removal of topsoil from the project so that we can ensure at decommissioning that that land can go back to agriculture. Other considerations that were included in the zoning ordinance amendments include application requirements, including a project narrative, a concept plan, a landscaping and screening plan, identification of environmental and cultural resources, and then various performance standards. These are already things that we require in our submission for special use permits. This just codifies it within the zoning ordinance. Other considerations that were added as part of the amendments, a public meeting shall be held by the applicant for public input and questions. The site plan shall be reviewed by the county's development review team, who may contract a third-party reviewer at the applicant's expense. Staff approval of a site landscaping, lighting, maintenance, and safety plan, as well as those environmental and cultural reports, shall be completed prior to the issuance of any permits for construction. Now to the tax implications. I spoke with the Commissioner of Revenue's office on how these projects could potentially be taxed here in the county. The state does give counties flexibility on the manner in which they tax these projects. The more straightforward approach is the utilization of the machine and tools tax. That is a rate of $1.82 per every $100 of value. At the beginning of a project, the solar panels themselves are valued at $500 per panel. So you're looking at approximately $9.10 per panel. For a frame of reference, the project that was proposed in Elston last year was around 10,000 panels for five megawatts. So you're looking at about $91,000 in M&amp;T taxes on a project of that size. Obviously, that factors in depreciation over time. Real estate taxes, when you're looking at the taxation that would be generated, properties that are currently receiving a land use deferment would need to be brought back onto the tax rolls as a commercial or industrial use. The property owner would be responsible for paying six years of back taxes. That's the difference between what they were paying under deferred land use and the new tax rate. And then another element that is taxed by the Commissioner's office is fencing surrounding commercial properties. So that would also factor in depreciation. State code also allows the county to enter into a revenue sharing model in lieu of collecting M&amp;T taxes and real estate taxes. Some localities are using that model. The county can also enter into a siting agreement with the developer in order to receive an annual payment over the lifetime of the project. The code of Virginia also permits the county or the developer to place a condition on an approved special use permit for an annual payment to the county to offset development impacts from that project. This would be things like road maintenance funds or other items that might arise as incidental to the project. The developer can also voluntarily provide financial contributions as a condition of their special use permit. And on to the solar bills. As you all know, House Bill 636 and its Senate companion were continued to next year's General Assembly. We greatly appreciate the board for your support of staff in providing comments to our legislators regarding that bill. However, I feel like we're playing whack-a-mole this General Assembly session. Another arguably worse bill has come forward. This one snuck up on us a bit because the original Senate version was substituted in mid-February with this version, which included this language. Essentially, it would prohibit a locality from including in ordinance limits on the total amount, density, or size of any ground-mounted solar facility or any energy storage facility until such time that the total area under panels within the locality exceeds 4% of the total area of the locality. Essentially, this would mean that we would have no regulatory authority until we reached approximately 9,944 acres under panels. That's concerning to staff because, again, it's over double what is being proposed through the amendments to the comprehensive plan. It also does not factor in all of the other land that is needed for these facilities, for landscaping, buffers, fencing, maintenance roads, et cetera. So that 4% is, I think, a low number with what we would actually be seeing in terms of the acreage that's being put forward. I will say that we got notice late Friday that this would be going in front of the Subcommittee for Cities, Counties, and Towns. I will be attending that meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. for the county to provide comment. The way the House works is you sign up for a spot, but you are not guaranteed to be able to speak. So if, for some reason, I am not able to provide testimony for the county tomorrow, Chair Biggs has signed a letter this evening indicating our opposition to this bill that will be submitted to the committee. We are winding down this General Assembly session, so I imagine things will proceed quickly as we try to oppose this bill. And with that, I will take any questions that you have for staff.
Okay. I want to go back to Supervisor Demonts and make sure she has hers answered there.
I do have a couple of follow-up questions for you. So I was elected and started my service on this board in January of 2016. And one of the events that I attended was related to solar. And that was early on in my time on the board. At that point, I don't believe decommissioning or providing a surety or a bond of some sort was a thing. Like, I don't think that that was required. Solar was kind of an exploding industry at that point and somewhat unregulated. Do we know when that kind of became an important factor in solar land use planning?
So really, it was the adoption of that Clean Economy Act by the General Assembly in 2020. That's when we really saw a proliferation of solar development happening in the Commonwealth. And since then, the General Assembly has been playing catch-up. As new issues arise, the General Assembly is addressing those. Very early on, after Clean Economy Act was passed, they worked with decommissioning. So I believe that's been on the books for several years now.
Okay. And then I think several years ago, there were significant reductions in M&amp;T taxes that could be charged for solar. Have all of those special cases sunsetted? And now it's, we can charge and receive 100%?
That's correct. That's my understanding. But I can get more information from you from the Commissioner of Revenue's office. I do know that they factor in depreciation, just like they do with any other machines and tools. But again, everything that I presented to you this evening is well within our authority for taxation.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the only two questions that I had. I really appreciate the follow-up, too, on the House bill and Senate bill.
Of course.
Thanks for that.
Okay. Supervisor Graski?
No questions, but thank you, Justin. Thank you.
All right. And Supervisor King?
I don't have no question. Appreciate you coming. But we do need to let everybody know that they need to contact Richmond because if that bill goes through, we've got no control.
Okay. And Supervisor Kitsch?
No questions at this time.
Okay. And Supervisor Bone?
I have two questions. One is, on one of your slides, it said, we tax fencing. Can you?
Yes.
What? Can you go to that slide?
Yeah. So for commercial uses, the Commissioner of Revenue's office does tax fencing. And that's by the foot, by the linear foot. I'm not exactly sure of the mechanics of that, but they do do that for all commercial industrial uses within the county that have fencing as part of their site.
And then somewhere, either this slide or further towards the end, it talked about financial contributions of the company. Is there, and this might be a Marty question, is there a limit to those things?
I will defer to Marty for that question.
It is somewhat troubling. Me and Justin have talked about that because it kind of rings like quid pro quo. But there is some language in there that specifically says what some of that stuff can be used for. But then there's also language in these siting agreements that do not. that do not obtain any restricting language. And like, we heard some examples of, what was the one that was really crazy?
There was a solar company that provided scholarships for neighboring property owners, children.
Wow.
Because of the proposal in front of you that these would be regulated by special use permit, we would really look at those on a case-by-case basis. There are some localities that exclusively use siting agreements. There are some localities that use a mixture of the different taxation. It's really up to the governing body and the Commissioner of Revenue for the locality to determine what that process will be.
And I would hope that we would proceed, if we do get offers of condition on approval, is that they be somewhat related to adverse impacts from the development. That'd be the best way to do it, the most defensible way to do it.
Thank you. That's all I have. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay.
If it's a voluntary proffer, does it have to be defensible?
It's not a proffer. It's a condition of approval, SUP.
So it is quid pro quo. Okay.
Yeah, that makes us all nervous, right?
Well, my only, do you have a comment?
Yeah, my only comment is, thanks for volunteering to go to Richmond.
I will be participating via Zoom.
And best of luck, because I've tried calling in one time, and they blow by you so fast. They're in such a hurry down there to get through these bills that, but hopefully, it'll be in our favor, so.
I was reviewing the written comments that were submitted on the bill earlier today, and I believe we were up to over 100 public comments on that particular bill. There are seven items on their docket tomorrow, so they're going to be very busy.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, my only comment, I want to thank you and Bree for really following up on the legislation. Because I know VACO's been very, you know, very into this also. And I've got the letter right here, so.
Great.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
So with that being said, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come forward to comment on this public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing. And we'll move to public address. And I will read you our comments on public address. So this is a time the Board of Supervisors welcomes citizens to present comments on issues related to the county. A sign-up sheet is available for the meeting for citizens to sign up to speak. Speakers are requested to provide their name, address, phone number, and to list the subject area they desire to address on the sign-up sheet. Following the speakers that have signed up, members from the audience may address the board. All comments must be directed to the chair and the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room. It is our time to listen to your concerns. The board does not reply to questions during this time. Please state your name and address when you come to the podium. You will have four minutes to speak either as an individual or a representative. At the end of three minutes, you will see a yellow reminder light appear on the box on the podium. At four minutes, a red light will signal you that your time is up. Speakers may leave any written statements and/or information for the board with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should they engage in personal attacks, use profanity, or abusive language, or debate with the audience. During public address, we ask the audience to please be respectful of the speaker's time by not applauding or making loud noises. And we do have a speaker signed up. And that individual is Mr. Glenn Chilcoat. Come on up.
Chair Biggs and members of the board. My name is Glenn Chilcoat, and I live at 1611 Bold Springs Circle in Blacksburg. I'm here tonight to discuss the MCPS budget. But first, I wanted to give you a little look into my day as a public educator today. This morning started early with me getting to school an hour early so I could tutor two students. After that, I led the morning announcements, taught four classes. Then I gave up my only planning time to cover for a colleague who had a sick child. After that, I led my last class, which is a percussion ensemble of 60 5th graders. One teacher, 60 5th graders. We had a lot of fun. Next, after car rider duty, I quickly went home to see my son and wife walk my dog. Then I left for my second job at the Wake Club in Blacksburg. Once I finished teaching there, I got a quick bite to eat, and now I'm here to ask you to fully fund the MCPS budget. To be honest, I don't mind advocating for myself and my colleagues, and I'm happy to be here tonight. Now, I know this board is comprised of a lot of individuals who support public education. So I'm hoping you understand how important it is to do all you can to make this year's budget a reality. It's no secret that our support staff earn very little, sometimes less than $15 an hour, as you saw, and that our educators are paid well below the state and national average. And we all know it isn't cheap to live in Montgomery County, especially nowadays with sky-high housing prices, insane inflation, and rising healthcare costs. But the real reason I'm here tonight, though, is for you to understand why a fully funded budget is important. First, we already have employees who pay over $1,000 out of pocket every month in healthcare premiums, if they're covering their spouse and their kids. For some, and this is absolutely true, and it's probably a really high number, it's more than half their salary sometimes, just in healthcare premiums. And then my real reason with that is that I'm afraid if we don't get a fully funded budget, or something close, the MCPS school board is going to have to make some very challenging decisions. And I'm worried that increased costs for everything will be passed on to employees in the form of increased premiums or no raise. And my colleagues truly deserve a raise. Our budget is a people-first budget, and Dr. Bregan and his team have done an excellent job being transparent. Please remember that this budget affects the second-largest employer in Montgomery County. An investment in the support staff of Montgomery County is an investment in Montgomery County. An investment in the educators of Montgomery County Public Schools is an investment in Montgomery County. We live here. We pay taxes. We eat at restaurants. We shop. We contribute in so many ways. Now, many of you ran on platforms to support public education. Please do your utmost to fully fund the MCPS budget. And lastly, there was a comment about collective bargaining in the total cost that Mr. King asked. From my calculations, and I could be wrong, and you'll get the number from them, it was right around $35,000, which is .002% of the total budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chilcoat. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? All right, Mr. Beard.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Beard. I live at 1250 Flint Drive. I live in Chrisburg. Tonight, I come here to speak as a concerned taxpayer citizen of Montgomery County. You know, I went to the shared joint meeting not too long ago, and it says county growth was at $4 million. So only in $2 million have I had to consider one-time-only money. That means a 1% growth. And so that's nothing. That's negative growth, in my opinion, when you look at inflation. We keep on hearing about inflation and the cost of everything going up. But so now the taxpayers are expected to fund all the teachers' MCPS, you know, the government schools. Okay, so you got 1% growth, and the MCPS is asking for a 12% increase, a 12% increase, and the county's only growing by 1%. So for you guys to raise those funds, it takes, what? For every $1.2 million you guys increase taxes, I mean, budget, it requires an additional point in tax increase, okay? So that's, you know, that's what we're looking at. So for every million, $1.2 million, you're going to increase our taxes by a point. That $35,000 in attorney fees, the taxpayers paid for that. No one else, the taxpayer paid for that. When you guys give them money, they spend our money. At the end of the day, you guys are spending money. You're spending the county's money. Okay, and again, since 2014, what has outpaced inflation? Pay raises. The MCPS budget increased 38.7%. Pricing index is only 28.7. We're being told we're off of fiscal cliff here. They want a 12-point, over 12% tax increase, I mean, budget increase. And the county's only got a 1% county growth. Don't match up. You guys got a hard job. Inflation's hurting all of us. Another thing, our grades improving. You know, we were talking about, I'm going to back up, enrollment. Enrollment is going down. So we're going to increase our budget 12% for a depleting population, okay? Our grades improving. Grades are still below pre-COVID. And so, and also, the teachers are going to have 188 days, which is the least amount in other states. So they're $800 behind being a top payer in the region, or 2%, but they're going to have the fewest workdays in the state. Okay, so, you know, boom, boom, boom. Also, does MCSD superintendent, you know, she, Annie Whitaker, says she got to move from operations to executive. But as an operations, she was making $151,644. Now she's making $192,780. She makes more money than eight other superintendents in our region. That's a 21% increase. In two years, how did her job description change? That she gets a $41,000 pay raise, okay? Those are just some of the questions, you know. Some additional revenue. We had 996 students registered for seven-day voter registration. Let's have them pay local taxes. Let's tax them for their cars or something like that. The Fidgetic Foundation, you know, they got rental income coming in, and they're not paying taxes on it. So let's address that. We also need to look at economies of scale and use all the lines to improve efficiencies. There are all kinds of different solutions besides raising our budget to cover a 12% increase. You know, all this means is a lack of money means a lack of loss of freedom. And you're taking freedom away from the citizens of Montgomery County by such a dramatic price increase, tax rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time to address the board? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public address. And Ms. Hill, is there any addendum tonight?
No, ma'am.
All right, so our next item is to go into work session. And that would be to discuss the county's comprehensive plan update process. Is there a motion to do so?
Motion.
In a sec, okay, second.
Second.
Roll call? I don't know.
Aye.
Mr. Demontz?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven aunts. So it's a good thing you are not driving to Richmond.
I was going to say, long time no see. Hello. I just wanted to come forward this evening and provide you all with an update on our upcoming update of the comprehensive plan. Staff is very, very excited about this. And I hope you will be, too, after you hear our vision and our plan for this process. So what is the comprehensive plan? Essentially, this is the official plan outlining the future development vision for the county over a 20-year period. It articulates the goals related to quality of life, health, safety, and welfare for our citizens. Per the Code of Virginia, each locality must adopt a comprehensive plan, and that comprehensive plan must be evaluated every five years and updates made to the plan if deemed necessary. The General Assembly has, over time, required additional items to be addressed in comprehensive plans. Sometimes that is mandated language. Mandated language, sometimes it is recommended language. Of the items that we must cover in a comprehensive plan are issues related to transportation, housing, and future land uses. We generally also include in comprehensive planning efforts public facilities, schools, health and wellness, environmental concerns, and public infrastructure. The comprehensive plan works in conjunction with our zoning ordinance, again, which is our enforcement tool, other sections of county code, our subdivision ordinance, which relates to the subdivision of property, creation of new lots, and the capital improvement program to achieve those goals. Ideally, the CIP and then all land use decisions that are made by this body are influenced by the comprehensive plan's goals. Our existing comprehensive plan was adopted in 2004. And since 2004, we've made several revisions to the plan to stay current, again, on those five-year increments. We amended the comprehensive plan to include urban development areas as mandated by the General Assembly. We adopted a series of village plans throughout the 20 years that we've been under this existing comprehensive plan. And then we've made several revisions to our future land use map on a case-by-case basis when requested. As the board will remember, we adopted Transportation Matters at the end of last year. That is our county's first standalone transportation plan and will serve as our transportation chapter in the new plan. You all will also remember the regional housing study that was done by the Regional Commission several years ago. That study will inform the development of our housing chapter, specifically related to affordable housing strategies, and pending the action of the board this evening, the solar energy systems amendments. This is the existing table of contents for our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2004. Just wanted to put this on the screen for you again just to show you how all-encompassing and comprehensive the plan actually is and all of the different facets of life in the county that are touched by the plan. So Montgomery Matters is the branding that we've adopted for our next comprehensive plan, Montgomery Matters 2045. The board appropriated funds for the comprehensive plan update in January. And the county is contracted with EPRPC to conduct the public engagement and drafting of our new comprehensive plan. This name may sound familiar to you because this is also the firm that did our Transportation Matters Plan that you adopted last year. Staff envisions a comprehensive plan process that is citizen-driven because at the end of the day, the vision and goals of our citizens are ultimately what we're all here to support. The process will be staff-led because, again, we know our community, and then supported by our consultant. And the process will take about 18 months from start to finish. So the steps in the process will be to first establish a citizen steering committee. This will provide guidance to staff and the consultant through public engagement. That group will meet quarterly and will assist in encouraging citizen participation in meetings, surveys, and other outreach. We are currently finalizing the list of individuals that will be invited to participate as part of that steering committee, and we hope to have an update to you by the end of the week with those names. We will also be creating a project website, which will be the main repository for information for Montgomery Matters and will include mapping and other engagement tools. COVID really has changed the way that we do public engagement and planning, so we really want to utilize digital tools where possible in alignment with our existing in-person engagement efforts that we're really looking forward to. Included in those public engagement efforts will be stakeholder meetings throughout the county and in each village area, a variety of engagement touchpoints. I want you to think of these as opportunities for us to get information in front of people, but also receive information. That's going to be things like festivals and events that are going on throughout the county, working with parents of school-age students and a variety of other ways that we can get that information and feedback. There will also be meetings with various county departments, advisory groups, public schools, and other partners, again, to ensure that we have as many voices contributing to the conversation as possible. And ultimately, this process will culminate with both the comprehensive plan document and village plans for each individual village in the county. So again, just to summarize staff's goals for this process, we want a citizen-driven plan that reflects the vision of our diverse community. We want meaningful and frequent public engagement activities. We really want everyone to feel like they have a voice in this process. And something that staff is really focused on is ensuring that our underserved communities are also included in the plan. A comprehensive plan that, at the end of the process, will tell Montgomery County's story and the story of its people, and that the final document will be a high-quality, interactive, and user-friendly plan. Montgomery 2025 was not necessarily the most interactive plan. We want a plan that is not just going to sit on a shelf or be referenced in staff reports. We really want this to be something that our citizens can go to regularly and understand where the county is going in the next two decades. And with that, I will answer any questions that you have.
Okay. All right, let's start over in this side. Sarah, Supervisor Bone? Any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, and Supervisor Kitsch?
No questions at this time.
All right, and Supervisor King?
No questions.
All right, Supervisor Demontz?
I'm not letting you off the hook that easy.
All right.
Couple of questions. First, thank you for the update on our update. I'm very excited as well. And I know you guys have a lot of work in front of you, so thank you for your commitment to that project. You mentioned that the regional housing study will inform some of the housing chapter. While I actually really love the regional housing study, I think it was wonderful. I did have some concerns, and I expressed them at the time, I think it was in 2018 when that study came out, about their second strategy for Montgomery County, which was to reimagine manufactured home communities. I did have some concerns about how that actually looks in reality. Could you kind of address, I guess, like, we have a six-year-old, five-year-old study at this point, and then maybe some of the strategies outlined don't necessarily flow with where we would want our community to go?
Right. And we're really looking at the regional housing study really as a basis for all the data that was collected, the trends that we're seeing in the area. You know, our problems that were identified in the housing study are only exacerbated over these six years. So we're really looking at it as a starting point, not as the all-encompassing housing chapter. There have been a number of advances that we're looking forward to studying more, particularly related to manufactured housing. There are products on the market now that were, I don't think, conceived six years ago. We have manufactured duplexes that are being provided as a product now. There's actually manufactured townhomes that are being provided as a project now. And then the county, when we look at manufactured housing, we really want to re-envision those communities, not as the traditional, and I don't like using this term, but a trailer park, and really a community of manufactured homes that have the same amenities that you're going to see in traditional subdivisions. I think our existing zoning ordinance covers that well. But we also are going to be looking at those trends as they get identified over the next 18 months to ensure that what we are proposing is relying on the data that has been collected, but building on that as a stepping stone.
Nice. Some of the advances that you highlighted also, I think, create different housing types that maybe aren't taxed as private property, which excites me quite a bit. I think that that's a big change, that manufactured housing should undergo, just politically, that's a statement, I guess. And then I wanted to clarify, as part of the process, that you definitely will be meeting with Montgomery County Parks and Rec?
Yes.
To make sure that their input is heard.
Correct. And, you know, Parks has a master plan. We really, they are, I believe, getting ready to embark upon an update of their master plan. We really see this process aligning with what they're doing and informing what they're doing. We've already also had conversations with MCPS and their strategic planning efforts and their capital needs, making sure that we address those as part of the comprehensive plan as well. Back to your housing point, two things I want to mention. There have been a lot of innovations in accessory dwelling units and also tiny homes. Again, things that we weren't thinking about six years ago when the housing study was done. We're going to be looking at an all-encompassing strategy about housing.
I appreciate that, and would love to see you guys come to a Parks and Rec meeting, so.
I imagine you're going to see a lot of me in the next 18 months.
Darn. Thank you very much, and thank you for your work on this.
Okay, Supervisor Graski?
Would you mind just going back a couple of slides to kind of the process? Yeah, and, okay, so stakeholder meetings throughout, okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that. And the point I wanted to make was how important it is to go to the communities as opposed to relying on them to bring information to you and just making it as accessible as possible. So that's fantastic, that's on there.
And we think it's particularly important for us to go to communities that historically have been disenfranchised and may have a distrust of county government, making sure that we're meeting them where they are so that they can be more comfortable to share things freely with us. That's fantastic, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just ask Justin, one thing, if he could touch on, was the engagement with the two towns.
Yes, so, not coincidentally, the town of Christiansburg is also currently going through a comprehensive plan update. We want to ensure that what we're doing in our comprehensive planning efforts are in alignment with what Christiansburg and Blacksburg are doing. Blacksburg, as Chris pointed out in a meeting earlier today, they're always comprehensive planning. They're always looking at something at any given time. So we want to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts, but we want to make sure that the things that we're doing are complementary, particularly in the areas of the county that are adjacent to town boundaries. Making sure that when we look at infrastructure and other needs, that we're being complementary of what the two towns are doing. They will be a part of our steering committee, they will also be part of that stakeholder engagement as well.
Okay, Vice Chair Fidjikowski, and then I'll get Supervisor Kits.
I think I asked you a question at Agenda Review about the size of the steering committee. I think you told me you're planning on about 15?
12 to 15 is the ideal size for that.
Yeah, I just thought everybody might want to hear that. But also, I was watching a program where an American manufacturer is building apartments out of huge Lego blocks. They weren't all plastic, but technologies, as they evolve, are, I think we're going to see a lot of changes. So, good luck with that.
Thank you. That citizen steering committee is really important. We view that as staff, as the group that's going to hold us accountable to make sure that the process that we're crafting, the touchpoints that we're doing are authentic and genuine. We really want that group to guide the process for us. Again, staff is going to be doing a lot of work, our consultant is going to be doing a lot of work. But we want to make sure at the end of the day that we're responsible to our citizens.
If I could just add this comment too. The citizen steering committee, you're going to have that made up of people from all walks.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's fantastic because you're going to get a variety of opinion and not just a cookie cutter type thing, so.
That's great.
And Supervisor Kits?
Yeah, just to follow up to something you said. You said you got the strategic plan from MCPS for capital projects?
So they have a strategic plan, they're in the process of developing their capital outlay for the next several years. We want to ensure that the schools' needs, their facility needs are reflected in the plan. But also, there are various elements of the comprehensive plan related to education. And we want to go to the subject matter experts. So we'll be consulting not just with MCPS, but also Virginia Tech, Rutherford University, and New River Community College to make sure that they're all included in the process.
I know we'd asked the schools, and the school board had asked the schools, the MCPS, for the comprehensive plan, and I didn't know what portion of it came up yet.
Well, if you remember, I sent out the notes from the meeting. They are going to be discussing this at the school board retreat, I think it's March 7th and 8th.
Yeah.
And then after that, they're going to officially present, staff is going to discuss that retreat. Then they present it to the school board at their meeting, and then it will come to us.
Their capital improvement plan.
Yeah, so this is a future, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Other questions? Okay, I have just one thought. When you're talking about outreach, are you talking about, like, service clubs too, like Rotary and Ruiton and that kind of thing? And the other thing I thought about, when you're talking about going to folks, is like, I'm thinking about the Warm Hearth Community or communities of retirement, you know, individuals. Like, is there any plan to sort of get to them, or?
Yes, and we're still working through what the specifics of the plan are going to be. But again, one of our goals is to make sure that we have, again, a diverse set of voices. And that's age, as well as other metrics of demographics. I know one element that we're looking at, again, with our housing chapter, aging in place is going to be a huge concern in the county in the next few decades. And so we want to make sure that we're speaking to folks in that community with their concerns as they continue to age in place.
That's excellent, yeah. A lot of people want to do that if they're able. Any other questions that brings to mind? Thank you again.
Look forward to sharing more with you through the process.
Yeah.
I do want to thank Justin and Bree. They are so into all this and keeping up with everything. Justin emailed us yesterday evening about four or something to tell us an update about that solar bill. And, you know, is very proactive in keeping track of that, looking out for the county, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, all right, anything else for the work session? All right, motion to come out?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please. Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Graski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Next, we have items of consent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call, please. Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Graski?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. All right, that leads us to new business. And our only item is the comprehensive plan amendment for the large-scale solar energy systems.
I would make that motion.
Okay, well, that's the first one. Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Graski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. And our second item is the ordinance amending Chapter 10 zoning large-scale solar energy systems. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Graski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, and that leads us to reports, and we'll start with county administrator, I mean county attorney. I know you're going to have an exciting report.
Was that 40, or no? I have no report.
Okay, county administrator?
I have a few things.
Okay.
First of all, I wanted to remind you that immediately following the PSA meeting on Monday night, around 7:30 or as soon thereafter as we can, we'll have the, I'll deliver the budget proposal to you. And then Chair Biggs and I attended a New River Passenger Rail Station Authority meeting last Thursday. I wanted to give you a short update on that. Virginia Passenger Rail Authority presented at the meeting, and they're getting ready to go with their 60%. They're doing an RFP to get the 60% design of the project, so we'll watch and see what happens with that. We saw some drone footage of the two sites that are proposed for the station, so that was interesting as well. There's a survey that's due the 28th of this month. It's shared on our social media, and I can send you the link again if you would like to fill that out. The response to that has not been quite as large as they thought they would like, so if you can share that, that'd be great. And then on April the 18th, there's going to be a Passenger Rail Open House here at the Government Center. We'll give you more information about that as we go forward. I wanted to give you a short update about the citizen who spoke at the last meeting about a county boundary line adjustment. There are some details, the staff's looking into that. We'll get some information to you on that as soon as we can. We didn't want you to think we forgot, but we don't have the answers completely fleshed out yet. We've gotten MOAs from several of the volunteer agencies, the fire and rescue agencies. I believe all of the ones that are in the county have been signed and received, so that's good news. And then just two more things. There's a flooring project underway in the Government Center. You'll probably see that over the next few weeks and months. It's going to start, I believe, this week in the downstairs lobby between the Commissioner and Treasurer's offices. And then the contractor has started working on the magistrate's building and court services building. They're doing asbestos abatement this week, and so probably at the end of the week, or maybe next week, the demo will start. We'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. All right, board member reports. Supervisor Bone?
So I've been talking to some of my constituents about the pipeline. Several of them, several of the people who are involved in the pipeline stuff went to Richmond to talk to DEQ and the Water Board. And part of DEQ's, DEQ's challenge, I would hope that we could put in our legislative objectives through next year something like fully fund DEQ. Because they don't have the time or resources to come inspect, like, the, because MVP's working very quickly these days, there's a lot of sediment and stuff that's erosion. A lot more is happening now than ever during this process. And there was discussion of, you know, maybe some of the pictures that were taken of it at this point were doctored up, which they weren't. So it's important for the DEQ to do their job and have the resources that they need. So, thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kits?
Had a nice conversation with a nice elderly lady named Ms. Martin. She called Supervisor King, called me, about a road and erosion problem. And so I drove out there. Her property happens to be right in between Christiansburg, the county, his district, and my district. So I drove down there Saturday. It's a wonderful 1918 tunnel, right under the railroad. So I'll get back with you in a little bit and make sure you get the information. But, yeah, it was interesting to drive down through there because a lot of that area is not paved. It's right near Christiansburg wastewater treatment. So it was interesting to get back through there and then sit in the middle of that tunnel with a train going over, so, yeah. So I'll get with you a little bit later about that.
Okay, all right, Supervisor King?
No report.
Okay, and let's go down here to Supervisor Graski?
I don't have a report tonight.
Okay, Supervisor Demots?
No report.
Okay, my only thing, a couple of things. First of all.
Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, and look, I even wrote it right here.
My name has been mentioned too many times.
Vice Chair Kits?
Well, I had a report, but now I don't.
Yeah, you have a report. What's your report?
I do not have a report.
You don't have a, okay. Okay, my, oh, I was going to tell you that Ms. Hill and I were able to attend on Friday night the German Club, the YMCA celebrated, Virginia Tech celebrated 150 years. And so I brought brochures for the board members. But what was interesting about it was they had it set up so you could actually talk to these young people, these students, that were the volunteers, and they were telling you about all the programs. And to be honest, you know, I had no idea of all the things that they do. And so it was really, it was really informative, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the other thing I wanted to say on sort of a more serious note was that during the last two weeks, I want to recognize on behalf of the board the employees that we have in Montgomery County and the way they pull together in such a stressful time to support families and to support each other. And I want to thank the leadership of Ms. Hill. And I also want to thank the leadership of the PSA Director. And I want to thank Supervisor King for his leadership with the PSA and with working with Chuck. And I just think that that needs to be said because it really, it really was something that, just to watch it and to see it really was meaningful. So anything else for the cause? All right, we are adjourned until February, what, 26th?
Okay, it's today, March the 4th. Today's the 26th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
March 4th.
Oh, let's have another meeting. Yeah, PSA, March 4th, 6:30. Multi-purpose room.